Welcome for coming. We are back in regular setting. If everyone please rise to the podium. All right, welcome to the Sustainable Jersey Team. You guys can have your ready.
Is our sustainable jersey cheap right here? I like that. Where did you get your badges from?
I like that. And I'm gonna have to get polos and stuff then.
Yeah, I like that.
Thank you. So, thank you again for having us here today. The difference between last week and this week is that, or last month and this month, is last month we wanted to focus on students. And it's one of the partnerships that we've had for the past two years with the Sustainable Jersey Initiative that we have in the district. And today, we're gonna be talking more about the school level. And we've been very fortunate this year with the inclusion of all three schools. So, we have representatives from, and our team leads from Riverview, Lakeview, and Valleyview. One of our Lakeview teachers is actually out sick today. So, apologize for her not being here. She feels bad and wishes she could be here. I've had the opportunity this year, I think more than last year, to work with more representatives that are here before you. So, when I think about it, worked with numerous board members, working with the assistant superintendent on different curriculum aspects, working with the superintendent and the business administrator on different aspects as well, everything from the work that Honeywell is doing to things along the lines of the eco-friendly purchasing. So, it's really great to have all these pieces come together in our year two, along with the support of our administration, different partnerships with PowerSave Schools, the foundation of Benville stepping up and helping us with different grants and aspects of our program. So, it's been really nice this year to have the culmination of everything and really see the district tie together around this amazing initiative. To start off, I wanted to talk a little bit about the district-wide initiatives that we've been working on. And these initiatives are the ones that filter down to all three schools. And that's a focus that I've been working on throughout the year, because I figured it was the best place to position myself and the position of Benville to be able to give each one of the three schools a chance for success. And I have to thank everybody here. The first aspect on there is the district's sustainability policy. And that really was the work of everybody here and the help of all three different schools to put that together and really give us a nice starting point moving forward with where we want to see our sustainability within the districts. We also had some nice reading enhancements to the district's strategic plan. It was great to be a part of that process. I really enjoyed it. And it was nice to see the aspects that we've been working on at all three schools be able to put in place for our future plan as we move forward. Curriculum mapping, this is something I've worked with Dr. Culp's on, and I really appreciate that. It highlights the work that we've really been doing within the schools already. And if you look at the curriculum that we're developing and how it spirals, starting at kindergarten and working its way up to A3, we have those pieces in place. And even when we are implementing new programs, we see that. And we see the start and we see the finish going up through middle school. And as we look at it through the sustainability lens, we're able to see that as it spirals all the way up. And it's nice to talk to my Valleyview counterparts and see just how something like the science curriculum starts in the kindergarten and really has a nice finishing point in A3 and be able to move up to the high school from there. Our energy-efficient appliances and equipment, it's something that we continue to strive with. And the use of our computers and new Chromebook initiatives, as well as eco-friendly purchases in terms of when Honeywell looked at the list and really seeing what kind of energy misers there were and being able to limit those. We're able to do it from the biggest purchase items all the way down to the smallest ones, which are the Chromebooks. So, it's nice to see. Our work with Honeywell has given us the ability to hit the energy audit and the energy tracking and management. And this has helped us for all three schools really lowering it. And it's the work that everybody here was able to do even before we decided to work with the Sustainable Jersey and bring that into our schools. And that's given us the opportunity to really track and see just what those changes are doing for our school, the positive impact that it's having, both on the education aspect, because it's something that we can bring to our students, as well as money savings for the district, which we can put into other areas, which are much needed, as we know, in schools moving forward. The access to healthy water in schools, we all went through that last year, and we appreciate that, both as a school and the students as well. They really got to learn what that meant, what does healthy water mean. I think we take that for granted sometimes, because it's just something that's always around. So, to see not just what was going on with our water, but how actively involved the district was moving forward with making the changes that were needed to bring that back through. And with all that positive work, we were able to get points for that as well. Enrichment programs through partnership is our PowerSave Schools. You got to see those fabulous students a month ago and all the hard work that they've been putting in, and we're really proud of them moving forward. And it's a partnership that Riverview is in year two this year, Valleyview and Lakeview are in year one. And we're looking forward to seeing where that's gonna go for us for next year as well and really see the spiral effect of that education, the sustainable education, as it moves from the elementary schools to the middle schools. And the final is the School District Foundation. This is one we're currently working on. And it's the foundation of Benville and the work that they're already doing for us. And they really helped Valleyview out this year. And even on a smaller scale, with the purchases of being able to do the play, being able to help out with the play, which you don't think about when it comes to sustainability, but you're looking at active students. And the students that are in the play, they're dancing, they're singing, they're doing those things. And it really showcases that when you look at sustainability, it's more than just we're looking at green, we're looking at getting students to be healthy, to have them be active, to be an active member of not just their small school society, but the society as a whole. And that's something that we've been able to do with their help. Our next step, we're gonna talk about the Riverview Green Team. So, we have three green teams that we're bringing forth. Myself and Erica Park were part of the Riverview Green Team. We were the heads of that. And as you can see, we have a great cross-section of people, from board members to administration to outside community members and even a past teacher who retired last year but wanted to stay on board and really help us moving forward. And you'll see this with all three schools, just a cross-section of people that are a part of the Riverview Green Team, the Valleyview Green Team, and the Lakeview Green Team. So, I'm gonna bring up Erica Park to talk a little bit more about the educational aspects that we brought into Riverview School based off of our Sustainable Jersey Initiative.
Thank you, Brad. I would just like to, before I even say anything, I just wanted to compliment Brad. He is the hardest-working person I know. And without him at our helm, I really don't know that this would be possible, you know, just to have not just our school at Riverview, but to have, you know, the other two schools, Valleyview and Lakeview, under his wing, pointing them in the right direction and really making sure that Eric Singleton is being taken care of. So, you know, Brad, thank you so much for all of the work that you've done. Honestly. Some of the things that we were able to accomplish at Riverview, a big piece of the education component is education for sustainability. There's a very prescriptive way to incorporate the educational component. Since I had some previous experience with that, I felt very comfortable being able to turn that over to the kids. We developed some problem-based learning units, along with the other members of our Green Team. I spoke to some of the other content area teachers, some of the other grade-level teachers, the special teachers, and really tried to look at what we were doing and how we could really make this most effective. The problem-based learning units, I'll share some of those with you. One of the big things that we were able to accomplish was something that we called greening our related arts night. So, that's a night when all of our related arts teachers got together and we looked at it and said, "How can we make this a green event?" And so, we started deciding that we were going to be having some hand-on workshops for the children. And so, we started collecting recyclable materials, things that otherwise would have wound up in the trash, and decided that we would put those in there. So, that was a big accomplishment for us. We incorporated a recycling, non-mandated materials project, the outdoor air quality, and then again with the PowerSave students. One of the members of our Green Team is our art teacher, Mrs. Sue Celester. And we were talking one day, and she said, "You know, how can I make this better for the kids? What can I do?" And I said, "Well, how do you function in your classroom? How do you run your classroom?" And she said, "Well, I'm always trying to use recycled materials, you know, nothing goes in the trash." And I was like, "Wow, that's a great project." And she said, "I think I can do something with my Matisse project this year." Taking a key from Amelie Matisse and his cutouts, we really looked at how, you know, nothing was going to go into the trash. They picked out all of the old colored construction paper and only were allowed to use that. They had to come up with a design scheme and, you know, really dig, pick through the trash bin, the recycle bin, to come up with their cutouts. And they did a fantastic job with that. The kids wrote a reflection piece on why it was important to them to incorporate this as a sustainable art project. And the reflections were, they were quite thoughtful, you know, they felt good about what they were doing. And I think it opened up some of their eyes. So, that was a great project. Another thing that I was able to accomplish in the media center, fifth graders were working on a nonfiction project, and most of them had chosen climate change and green ideas. They wanted to know more about green technology. They also were interested in superstores. So, we were able to create nonfiction newspapers with Chromebooks utilizing the Google App Spread Creation Platform. And they created everything, they did their research within the library media hub, and they constructed these awesome newspapers. And then we were able to share them, you know, and they also did a reflection piece at the end that they also felt really good about the work that they were doing. They also had commented that it opened their eyes, you know, like looking at what we already have and how we already function and how can we keep that under our guise of sustainability. In second grade, I went to a professional development workshop at Duke Farms this year on a Saturday, which was awesome. They have an eagle cam that they set up. And so, one of the units of study that I developed for the second graders was we monitored the eagle nest. Unfortunately, what happened was quite dramatic at the Duke Farms eagle nest. There was a visiting female that came in and took ownership of the previous female's position in the nest. And so, there was a big hobob and the nest, the pair of them were actually were able to produce eggs this year. So, we found another eagle nest in Hanover, Pennsylvania, which was pretty close by. And they were, the kids were absolutely glued to it. So, we watched and monitored the nest. We came up with some ideas, and we talked a lot about how back in 1976, New Jersey only had one pair of eagles that was able to produce eggs because of all the DVT poisoning. And we talked a lot about that. And the kids were really upset about that. They said, "Well, you know, if you look at the numbers of the population now, and the idea that we can watch eagles pretty much anywhere," they were very excited about that. So, after monitoring the nests, we, the kids wrote creative writing stories where they took a perspective of either the eagle, somebody in the nest, they took on the first person of being the eagle. They wrote collaborative tales where they finished each other's chapters. They looked at it by different ways. One group even came up with naming the two eagles, say Bob and Mary. And each group, each person within their book had a different tale or a different perspective of Bob and Mary's life within the eagle nest. So, that was great. And the education for sustainability piece, the component that came into play there was that, you know, everything that we do and that we don't do makes a difference. So, by eliminating DVT from, you know, pesticide farming as a regular habit, we took that piece out of the equation and they were able to recover and become out there. The next thing, oh, this was a couple of pictures from Related Arts Night. We collected bottles, we collected toilet paper tubes, paper towel tubes, yogurt containers, everything you could imagine, shoeboxes, everything. We had one huge massive pile. Each of the Related Arts Room wound up with different components. The first picture is in the library. I had created a journal. So, that was out of like tissue boxes and whatever else the kids wanted to do. They created little journals for themselves. There's Mrs. Freeze, our music teacher, and she had different instruments that she made that night with different bottles and coffee cans, and the kids decorated and filled with, you know, and basically anything could become a musical instrument. And there are some students with their journals that they had made and some finished musical products that is. One of the non-mandated recycling was the Crayola Color Cycle, which I know Lakeview also did that project, which is a great project. Crayola has a program where they will collect any marker that's been used, that's bound for the trash, and it could be, and it doesn't have to exclusively be a Crayola product. You can ship it back to them, and they take it and turn it into fuel. So, we did a little bit of data, we counted, we put together a pie chart, we collected 614 markers, they paid for the shipping back, and we were able to help create a gallon and a half of fuel that would run a tractor someplace. So, they were pretty happy about that. That's an ongoing project too. We'll just keep shipping those markers back to Crayola. And that brings us to the air quality program.
This is an air quality program that we established last year, and we just wanted to highlight it because the students are still working with it. It's something that's available in our school, but I know that both Lakeview and Valleyview have done this program, and it's a little bit fresh for them and exciting. So, I would love for them to present it as their slides go on. But another thank you to Erica. We're gonna miss her next year, but we'll definitely be in touch and working together no matter what. So, thank you. Next up, we have Lakeview, and we have our one representative, Abby Ackerman is here. Lindsay Harris is actually sick. She feels bad that she was not here, but in spirit, she is urging everybody on, the two of them together did a great job getting everything started for Lakeview this year. So, I thank both of them.
Good evening, everyone. As Brad mentioned, Lindsay wanted to be here, but she's not feeling well tonight. So, being that it was our first year at Lakeview, Lindsay and I decided to focus on two key points, although we accomplished more than one action. But our primary focus was to establish a Green Team. So, you can see that we did that. We had a nice cross-section of staff, teachers, instructional aides. We also included the K Kids, which is a service club, and they were the ones that took over the marker drive for us. And we also included the Girl Scouts because they had a recycling project through the terror cycle. So, these are some of our actions that we accomplished this year. We established a Green Team. We had several lessons under the Education for Sustainability action. We had some interdisciplinary lessons. We focused on recycling, non-mandated materials, the PowerSave Program, and the Air Quality Program. So, here are the kids. Every morning, they would check the app, just like Riverview and Valleyview. And they would see an app like this with the air quality across the country, and then they would hang a flag at the front door to make everybody else aware of the air quality for that day. So, in first grade, thanks to Dr. Culp's, we studied caterpillars. So, the kids were like two scientists. They observed from day one when the caterpillars were delivered, and we watched them change and grow. And there were several components in this lesson, not just the life cycle, but we also studied the body parts and, you know, the weight patterns. And we had a celebration at the end of the unit where we released our butterflies in the plaza. And thank you to our Valleyview friends for providing us with those monarch wings. But the kids loved it. It was really hands-on, and they enjoyed it quite a lot. Okay, in second grade, they did a lesson, this is really cool too, where they monitored their waste at snack time. So, on June 1st, our first day, they weighed all of the waste from snack that day. And then they brainstormed ideas how they could reduce waste, they could pack in reusable containers, they could waste less food. And there was a huge buy-in, and the kids went through the roof. So, by, check the date, I think the following week, they had reduced the waste by 10 ounces. So, tomorrow's our final day. And then each day, they graph, you know, the total amount of waste. You can see the graph in the middle. So, this is Mrs. Nardon with her class, and her chart's behind her, each day tracking the amount of waste. Okay, this was a fifth-grade lesson where the kids had to plan and design the benefits of a home garden, but they had to work with the constraints of spacing with the plants and financial constraints. That was a fifth-grade lesson. In fifth grade, they completed a science lesson that was tracking the life cycle of a water bottle, and then how they could, you know, reduce the use of plastic, recycle it, reuse it. There was a very similar lesson done in third grade also. And then they did a blind taste test, tap water versus bottled water. Here's a picture of our K Kids collecting and counting the markers for the Crayola Color Cycle Program. They were very excited about that too. Okay, we also spent some time tying into the district initiative of promoting water as the healthiest drinking choice. So, the kids made posters, and we, the kids went around and, you know, put them on the walls for the refillable water bottle stations and the water fountains. The Benville Green Team had a table at the Green Fair promoting water as the healthiest drinking choice. And this is actually a video that I think that some of the fifth graders are able to play that video.
The Wi-Fi is not doing so good. You try it.
No, yeah, we don't have Wi-Fi.
Okay. Well, it's very cute. Take my word for it. And they want you to drink water. It's really cute. They set up like a news station, and we'll have to email it.
Is it embedded in the video?
Yes.
Okay, so, that's coming Friday.
Okay. So, right. But it's like a little news interview, and they basically go through and highlight all the reasons why you should choose water as the healthiest drinking choice. Very cute. Okay, I like it. So, thank you, thanks you very much for your support in our first year, and we thank Brad. But how exciting, you know, the buy-in from the kids is real. I mean, they go through the roof. This really applies to their everyday life, and I mean, they just eat it up. They love it so much. So, we're really looking forward to next year when we're able to accomplish even more in having established this foundation this year. So, thank you, thanks you very much.
I think you're starting to see just how great the program is, because it's not just a district-wide top-down program, but it really feeds into what each school is passionate about, what the students are passionate about, and what the Green Teams at each school is passionate about. So, you're gonna see a lot of differences in that moving up to the Valleyview with Chris Johnson and Lydia Silas, who did an amazing job as well, just how different it can be when it gets to the middle school as well with everything. So, thank you again, and...
All righty, so, at Valleyview, we set up on this adventure. I heard, woo, and that's really where Brad's, where's Brad's been at with us. I've been very happy with the cross-section of people that we gathered for, our Green Team, everyone from teachers, administration, and parents as well, who jumped on board when they were given the opportunity. At Valleyview, our main focus area is also related to education in different areas. One of our upcoming slides, we'll share a little bit more about that. The Green Fair that, our first Green Fair at Valleyview was an exciting opportunity to connect with a lot of different people in the community and throughout New Jersey with the nonprofits. We also went through a little recycling of non-mandated materials. We'll share more about that. Also, the air quality outdoor flying program run by the EPA and PowerSave. As mentioned, in the education department for sustainability, one of the areas that was a great cross-curricular activity took place, will officially be underneath Climate Arts, but involved my science students, and I was interviewed with different people who have careers and different volunteers in the community. And I think Brad mentioned that the sustainability component, one of the really interesting things is showing people it's not just green, country, state power, there's a lot more to it besides that. The idea that we have healthy kids, both in what they're doing as far as their activities and what they're concerned about and thinking about. So, with this, it took a little bit of coaxing to get everybody kind of on board with it, but students had a choice of different people they could interview. They could interview people on-site, like our custodians. They could interview people off-site, like carpenters and construction workers and people who work for the township themselves to see what the link is between sustainability and the topics we talk about and those different types of jobs. It was a great opportunity to use the Green Fair as a jumping point for many of them. So, for instance, we had students, one of our students, I think a parent is here, actually, we had students come in and interview the different vendors that came from the Benville Farmers Market. And it was fantastic for me to have a student run up to me and tell me how exciting it was to talk to Mr. Fontana Rosa about what he does with his business. He sells Italian specialties. And how that student could connect Italian specialties with sustainability. Mr. Fontana Rosa donates a huge amount of his product that he won't be selling, and he won't anticipate selling. He donates literally hundreds of pounds a year to the community, people like me. And that, for me, made that portion of this project really worthwhile. Another area of education that we have gladly kind of jumped on board with, we have Chris Bies, who is with our STEM program. Chris has, for some time, worked on hydroponics project with his students. The hydroponics project nicely ties into traveling in the classroom, which is a program that's run throughout the state. It's actually run throughout many different states. And it's an opportunity for students to see the technology that's involved in maintaining different plants and really taking advantage of a system that has abiotic and biotic factors. Scooching back to that previous slide with, with traveling in the classroom. It's an exciting opportunity for us to continue with this program. There's always so much more that you can do, and after you have something implemented, it's great to be able to think about the new opportunities you have to connect with math and to connect with other disciplines as well. Chris Bies has been fantastic about establishing traveling in the classroom, and students have been excited about that as well. So, a lot of enthusiasm related to that program.
Okay, so, we want to showcase the solar car model, the model cars that students made in Science Inquiry. All the seventh-grade students made a solar car, and then they showcased them at a competition, Trans-Option Solar Car Competition. We did have a first-place winner, and that was the missile for engineering. The judges were very impressed with that child, those two guys, their work. And so, they were able to go back again to the finals, and they did not win any position at that point, but they were very excited to be able to have their car showcased and to see how solar energy is used to create a car that can be motorized and moved. In conjunction with that, we, during spring break, we had a parent, Crystal Rowe, and his daughter join him to make a flat surface so that the students could test their cars on a flat surface, because the sidewalk basically is very bumpy and the cars would be stopped by the different cement roadways. So, they created the flat surface that the kids could run their cars on. And then during the Green Fair, we actually had a table set up where the people who came to the Green Fair could make solar cars, and the children could just free with all the materials that we had been saving over the years, just make a solar car and actually take it home. I think there was actually a second grader there who made a perfect car that could run almost better than some of our middle school kids. And so, that whole thing was just a great combination of what, using engineering, using recycled materials, using reusing materials. And then that runway actually became part of the school play, where they took that and made the props. And that wood was donated by people that would donate money to us, and that we bought the wood, and then that wood was given to a sort of oral who then made the props for the play. So, a total reusing of materials, and there was a lot of excitement about that.
All right, another area that was an easy tie-in for us in some regards related to math, and there were really two components... were really two components that our math teachers took advantage of. We had three teachers on board with tying into the garden that's in the process of being established. Some of those teachers, actually, all three of them, went through both the mapping of the gardens and seeds to seedlings. So with mapping of the gardens, just like you would expect, related to proportion, proportion and expected yield per area, they had to work through percentages with their seeds to seedlings. So our eighth-grade advisories on one of their advisory periods put together the trays themselves and put together the racks with the grow lights so those plants could be started ahead of time in classes. The math teachers in math classes went through and they made sure that they were tracking the progress of plants. So everything from percentage of yield to rate of growth. And students were really excited to have something different in their classrooms that they noticed wouldn't be situated in place outside.
So one of our science teachers decided that if her, where her kids went to school, they did a waste-free lunch and so she took it upon herself to get her advisory together, her sixth-grade advisory students, to put this whole event together. And in the process involved other advisory groups and students. And a lot of excitement went into going to other advisories and telling, telling people about the event, communicating the event, making posters for the event, actually then saving on paper and not making posters by just coming back and writing on our white boards, the signboard, nice white boards that we put into our rooms, became the poster. And we then found out that we could save a lot of garbage within a day's time. At one point, we just had the reg of garbage and then the next week, we, you know, eliminated all of the containers that would be garbage. And we also then had a compost that Mrs. Silas took home to put into her compost, although it's all the food that we did not eat, but that could be put into a compost. And so they, it ended into a compost situation as well. I think the kids were very surprised how much they could not wait, that they could save, that they didn't have to have lunches that contained a lot of garbage. And it may not even have occurred to some of them that some of the things that could be put into the compost was put into the compost. We also had teachers get involved with this for students that were not able to bring a lunch. Teachers got involved and bought things to add to that excitement so that everybody was included. And all three lunches did it. Oh, and then they also got a ticket for a raffle that then they were able to get a water bottle and a gift certificate. So that was, that was our first. We will do that again and we'll do it frequently.
Okay. An ongoing project that we've been working our way through, started off with support from the Denville Foundation, provided a grant for Ms. Johnson and I to purchase the supplies. The administration was very supportive with the location for the garden. So there's a garden initially established on the main roadside of the building and we eyed up an opportunity that had any car coming up to approach the school through our parking lot would be able to see what was happening with our student garden. Situations ideal with sun and water and all those types of things that can sometimes cause a little bit of difficulty in getting things going. At this point, I have estimated that over 200 students, I can track them name by name, have been involved in some way in this project. So I know it seems a little impossible, but we are happy to have students to help with every aspect from cutting and eating and staining and...
Taking holes.
Those holes. Thank you, Mr. Cashman, for your assistance with that last portion. And it's been an adventure, but I'm very happy to say tomorrow my eighth graders will work on constructing the gates for it and that's a math project for them as well. They have to figure out the forces that would be applied and the strongest design that they would need to put together, the materials that we have available to us. This is a slide that Chris and I would like to share together. There's a few different things. The community connection that Brad mentioned is really a critical part of this, that kids don't just see it within our school, that kids see it within Denville and beyond. The Green Fair, as mentioned, was an opportunity for that state place with the vendors from the market being willing to switch over. I don't know if they had made a ton of money, but it was an opportunity for them to show what they do each week throughout the summer and even during that winter market as well. So that was a great connection for us to make. If you look on the bottom right, we have students that are lined up. There's a student stuffed inside that plated woodpecker costume. That was a connection with New Jersey Audubon. The two pieces of artwork that you see on the left-hand side, we have noted that there's going to be an art contest, sorry, that's held. And we actually had students that would do such high-quality work that normally they only accept one submission per school. We had students that were accepted, a number of students, because the quality work was so high that when they came to see us at the Green Fair, they couldn't possibly say no to the work that we were putting together. In the center, the picture that you see with the superhero holding up the earth under different conditions, that was used as our promotional poster throughout town.
Okay, so I'd like to highlight the butterfly wings because, the butterfly wings were actually created by many eighth-grade students doing a task at a time. So they could come and we got pizza boxes, used pizza boxes. We cut out the parts that were most racy. They used exact knives. They were safe. They knew exactly what they were doing and because of a lot of other activities that we've done in the classroom. And then they painted. And painted was a big deal because you had to paint one side, let the other side dry, and then the next group of kids would come in and, absence of dry, they would then paint the other side. So it wasn't like one student could say, well, that's my butterfly and I worked on it. They worked on it as a group of eighth graders. Very exciting for them to be a part of it. Then another group of kids put on the orange piece of it. And when they saw it, when I saw it, that it was gone to the second graders and they were wearing them, the excitement that I had for the eighth graders, I'm like, eighth graders, this was a gift that you gave to the younger grades. And it was very exciting for them to do that. So they took pride in that and they weren't saying, well, that's just mine. Again, extend it through the community. And the top other one, the other board that has, it's a trifold, that is actually going to the farmer's market, the ladies at the farmer's market, they wanted something that, they've been wanting this for a while. So one of the, one of my students put this together, then they went to art, the art club, and they painted. And what it is, is there's the pieces that are magnetic, the whole board is magnetic. And so the people that come to the Green Fair can actually, or to the green, to the farmer's market, can move the pieces around. They also have questions and answers about the food and when it grows during the season. And so that is actually going to be going into the town. And there's also one other board that will be going to the town that our kids made and will use. So I'm very excited about that.
All right, Brad's gonna hop up.
Oh, we're done?
Well, no, you can go through it quick.
Oh, all right. So we just started to collect things that were not going to be going in the garbage, shoes, clothing, and recycled bottles that actually get to be reused instead of recycled. And then we have our air quality program, which every day we put a flag, beautiful flags that the PTA purchase cars. So, thank you.
Wrap it up.
So just want to thank everybody here. Again, you can see just a cross-section of everything throughout the three schools and district-wide. Moving forward for next year and even going into this year, River View has achieved the Bronze Certification. We're very proud of that. We'll be receiving that in August. And right now, Lakeview and Value View are both positioned well to achieve the same award.
Brad, what happens with the, with the bronze? What are we gonna do? Is there some kind of ceremony? Is it some official thing?
It is an official thing. We'll be getting the certificate for each one of the three schools, for every school deposit to be able to put there. And a celebration that I would like to put together for September for us as well. And there is different activities over the summer once they do announce and all the schools across New Jersey. So they wait for every school in New Jersey to be able to have their final submission, which is June 29th. And then August is the final determining factor and that's when all the schools are notified. So, thank you all again. It's been a pleasure and have a great summer.
Thank you guys.
Oh, Mr. Cass. I just wanted to thank Mrs. Cass in front of the audience.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
My best, very close.
Hey, watch the fit.
I know. Well, I grew up in Denville, too. I thought I'd hang out in one of these.
I didn't want to tell you.
Yeah, my husband and I bought a rocksperry. And my mom, my dad, my sisters are all here. Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you guys. Thanks very much. Great job.
Yeah, it's cooling down.
You got something to do remotely.
That's what's nice about the building, actually. It's all the way to town. So I am so impressed about how much stuff they were, they were in a real conference.
Yeah.
That's very common to see how much, someone and how it turns out.
How it comes to a living, breathing thing, right? Yeah, it's interesting to get a small taste of that, I guess.
Well, when they got the circuit, they were getting the circuit, we were like, actually, yeah.
And they usually, I know the town, they do a ceremony, they, they, they'll do something.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do something to level it, that'd be cool. All right. All right, moving on. If you're ready, you're up.
I'm up. Okay. You all got a report from the Ross Haver Report. We did not leave the EI yet, as my summary sheet explained. You have a hard copy of it with my memo in front of you, as well as it was emailed to you the other day. We do have a meeting with EI associates tomorrow to work on melding the two and what, what pieces need to be in there. We also have on our agenda later, discussion items to discuss the substandard space, so at that time, we can spend some time talking about it. Today, we were, we had one of those Department of Education security visits. It was unannounced, except for the chief and myself. So we were the only two that knew. The principals didn't know, the staff didn't know. Came around, was a state trooper with the chief and his, his team, as well as a person from the Department of Education to see how our drills are and what, what things went well, what things you could do to improve. So it was, it was a positive experience on our side. We saw the things that, you know, we, we maybe need to tweak a little bit and some things that we felt were great. And we also, the chief and I also said to ourselves that we, we may want to do this internally yearly, too. Like, don't tell anybody except with the tools, just show up and do it, see what kinds of things were good, what kinds of things were not good. We have a couple upcoming events. The graduation for Value View is this Friday, June 16th, at Morris Knolls. The last days of school are the 19th and 20th, that's next Monday and Tuesday, and they are both half-days. The YMCA has offered to continue a camp for the three days. They did not get much of a, of a turnout, but they have offered to continue that, even though there aren't many children signed up. So the YMCA will have a camp on June 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. And my merit goals update were handed out to you. I'll just scroll over real quick. It was handling last Friday's packet. One of them was to create the strategic plan. This is our final strategic plan poster. And I gave you the electronic version other than my packet this week. And this is, like I said, the strategic plan poster has all the goals, objectives. This will be prominently displayed throughout the district. I'd like to have it in this, in this building as well, once we move in here. And the artist from, the graphic artist from Nichol Associates designed and puts this together for us. So we'll get it framed and we'll have it around the district. The last one was the increase in higher-order questioning in our district, which I thought, I was very pleased with the results through our walkthroughs. So our data from September and October showed that out of a total of 220 walkthroughs, 36 or 16% were in the three higher-order cognitive engagement sections, analysis, synthesis, and evaluation. These are pieces of what's called Bloom's taxonomy. Basically starts with a, the lower-end questioning, like knowledge, basically what is the author's name? And we roll all the way up to why do you think the author named that child that, or that dog that, or whatever it is. And basically you have more and more type higher-level questions. So the, again, September, October data, 222 walkthroughs from the, from the administration, administrative team, 36 were higher-order, which translates to 16%. Now during the year, we discussed this at faculty meetings and any types of trainings that we did on trying to improve or increase the higher-order questioning. So comparing the September, October to the May, June, the high, out of 229 walkthroughs, just only eight more that occurred at that time from the administration, 66 ended up being higher-order or 29%, which is an increase of 13% from 16% to 29%. So I was very pleased with the results of that. I think these are the types of things that are going to help us on our journey to complete this document right here that we will work on and continue striving for excellence in the district in every aspect of everything we do. And that's my report for today.
Okay. Nice. Thank you very much.
In your addendum, the updated data for two of my merit goals, goal number two and goal number four. A chance to speak with the committee about goal number four, which is our oral language proposal, adding an increasing Spanish function next year. So you have that information in your electronic addendum since. I updated from what our committee meeting was, it looks like we are going to be able to get an updated version of the book. At this, at the meeting, it was looking like the high school is going to still be using the 1997. And now we've discussed whether we use the 2013 edition and we were able to purchase those through a second-hand vendor for $8,000, which is about $12,000 less than what we had budgeted, but more than what we had thought. The 1997, I'm personally much happier getting the 2013 version than the 1997 version with that. And then listed on the form is just the instructional plan. We have looked to hiring, we've already hired a Spanish teacher, we have a candidate coming through soon for the French position. And then below, just as the instructional plan of the section. And now that we have, the students have, they closed today of them selecting their choice. So we were able to figure out how many sections we're going to need. So for the committee, that's also been revised because we had fewer sections than we thought based on their choices and based on the number of students who are not taking oral language or be taking reading or basic skills in lieu of that. So you have a two-year plan of how many sections we'll need for each of the levels of French and Spanish. And that's goal number four. Goal number two, we, I just got the data finalized yesterday, and those were students that participated. We first had to really design the Orton Gillingham program and the training. So the students that used to hear are really the stu, only the students that actually had a certified Orton Gillingham teacher, not those that were going through the training. Next year, we have trained now 11 teachers. And as a pilot, they each worked with two kids all year. So 22 other students, but they're not in this data, worked with the training teachers. But now, in addition to the one Orton Gillingham teacher we had, we now have 11 certified teachers in K3. So this is going to increase our options for intervention dramatically. We have come up with a plan of the intervention for next year and some students are going to be receiving Orton Gillingham five times a week, which is really what they need, but we did not have the capability to do that in the past. But you can look at the data, all the students, we were hoping that they would close the gap at either by 50% or reach the benchmark. All of those in highlighted yellow actually caught up to grade level, which is incredibly impressive considering they're starting the year at significant deficits. I really wanted to highlight the second-grade students because by that second grade, they were already, if you can see the gap levels, they were already at deficits ranging from five grade, five levels to 10. Some students were 10 levels behind already, only in second grade. So you can see how hard it is to catch up and it just continues if you don't have a serious intervention. And now that we have, the students have a close today of them selecting their choice, so we were able to figure out how many sections we're going to need. So, for the committee, that's also been revised, because we had fewer sections than we thought, based on our choices and based on the number of students who are not taking oral language, will be taking reading or basic skills in lieu of that. So, you have a two-year plan of how many sections we'll need for each of the levels of French and Spanish. And that's goal number four. Goal number two, we, I just got the data finalized yesterday, and those were students that participated, we first had to really design the Orton-Gillingham program and the training. So, the students that used to hear are really the stu, only the students that actually had a certified Orton-Gillingham teacher, not those that were going through the training. Next year, we have trained now 11 teachers. And as a highlight, they each worked with two kids all year. So, 22 other students, but they're not in this data, worked with the training teachers. But now, in addition to the one Orton-Gillingham teacher we had, we now have 11 certified teachers in K3. So, this is going to increase our options for intervention dramatically. We have come up with a plan of the intervention for next year, and some students are going to be receiving Orton-Gillingham five times a week, which is really what they need. But we did not have the capability to do that in the past. But you can look at the data, all the students, we were hoping that they would close the gap, either by 50% or reach the benchmark. All of those in highlighted yellow actually caught up to grade level, which is incredibly impressive, considering they're starting the year at significant deficits. I really wanted to highlight the second-grade students, because by that second grade, they were already, if you can see the gap levels, they were already at deficits ranging from five levels to 10. Some students were 10 levels behind already, only in second grade. So, you can see how hard it is to catch up, and it just continues if you don't have a serious intervention. And that student caught up seven levels this year, which without this program, I do not think. It was intense intervention every single day, but caught up at his, it still has a little way to go, that student, but we can see the goal. They could catch up by third grade and be on track. But so many of them actually are on grade level now, going to the next grade, which, you know, that's what you hope for. You don't want to wait till seventh, eighth grade to find out they're now 20 levels behind. It's impossible to catch up. So, we're thrilled with that. We're looking forward to continuing the training. For next year, we're going to be training some of the staff. I think nine teachers are continuing to do the fourth grade through eighth grade training. So, we're excited about that. And you'll have the final data for the goal number three, which is the math problem solving. They finished up the assessments and turned them in today. So, by Friday's packet, you'll have the data from that. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Well, that's good. Very exciting. Can I ask you one quick question about the languages?
Yes.
I'm just curious, because I have my own theory about it. Could you give me some idea of where the preferences fell with French, Spanish? Was it even? Was it really weighted towards one, towards another?
I actually cannot tell you the answer to that at this point, because I only got this today, the number of sections that we were going to need in each. So, I think it's pretty evenly spread. And also, some students selected no preference. So, I guess, well, not that many, but that, but we have a handful that are going to, I guess, go wherever there is room. But right now, he said that it looked like, I don't know which one would be, like if there's 20 students in one and 18 in another, or 25 in one and 18, you know, it's a balance.
But it seems like a pretty even...
So far, yes.
Okay.
Yep. But I will get a report on that for you.
I had a question also. And I apologize, we discussed this previously, and I forgot about it. On the proposed plan for the Spanish and French teachers, we have a tremendous emphasis on STEM today in the schools, and we're going to eliminate the science inquiry cycle. You know, and reduce the teacher there. So, is that something that's really not needed, that's a nice to have? Or are we really giving up something we shouldn't be giving up?
Well, we decided, based on bringing in the STEM program. So, we changed it from being, the kids were taking every other day a STEM class. We made it a full year, a full quarter class instead of 18 days, and then eliminated the science inquiry cycle. So, we actually had two science-related cycles, in addition to a full year of science. So, now the students get a year and a quarter of science, and they were getting a year and a third. So, they have a little bit less science, but the kinds of projects that we were doing in inquiry were similar to what we were doing in STEM. Like, even some of the things you saw up there, some of them were in STEM class and some were in inquiry class. Now, they have to, they have to actually choose. Every student takes STEM, but the science inquiry projects, some of those will be a club instead of an actual elective choice.
So, a lot of that's being covered now in STEM?
It is. So, when we added the STEM, three years ago, I guess, we didn't roll back the science inquiry. And so, now the students were taking, you know, a year and a half every single year.
Okay. But the bottom line, it's a little bit less than what it used to be?
It is. I mean, it's 18-day cycle less than, if they chose that. Because some students, now that they have to choose their electives, may not have chosen two science inquiries.
Okay, thank you.
And then we use the one to budget for one teacher, and then we budgeted for the other.
Thank you. Damaris, business and ministry is coming?
Right. My report is just a reminder that we have a little meeting on the 19th, it's only a week from now. And also, I wanted to remind everybody, last year, we had a special meeting for superintendent evaluation. I just want to bring it up, to see if you guys are interested in doing that again, or if it's going to be done in a secondary session during regular meetings.
Actually, you raised something I wanted to raise at the end of the meeting. So far, only two people have done the CSA evaluation online. So, everybody else needs to get on that, do that. And then we can talk later, when we talk later about what our feeling is about the evaluation process. Have any for that, have you? Okay, all right. At this time, if there's nothing else, I'll open for public comments at 7:28 PM. Do you have anything you'd like to say? Please approach and just sign in and announce your name and address for the record. Good. Seeing no public comment tonight, we'll close also at 8:20 PM and move on to the normal business. So, we have all business. Mr. Luer, would you care to take us through items we will be voting on in our next meeting?
I would be happy to. At the next meeting, we will be voting on the following reports, education reports and minutes. Section A will be the treasurer's school monies and the board secretary reports. Section B will be the education reports, student enrollment, medical office, and the, excuse me, the HIV cases, Valley View 12 and 13, and River View 4.
Am I talking too loud to make that echo? I think we're just getting a little feedback. You may want to back it up here.
Is Patrick just...
Patrick stepped out, maybe just...
Yeah. And... How about that? That's a little bit better.
Sounds all right. There's still some feedback. Oh, I think she's ready. I think that...
Okay. And section C will be the minutes from the work session and executive session of May 8th, the regular session and executive session of May 22nd.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any comments or questions on these items for discussion before we move on? Patrick, we're getting some kind of feedback, if it's correctable.
I just had a little comment for my question.
No worries. All right. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to new business, personnel. If there are no objections, I would like to move items under personnel 1 through 3 at the block, and I've asked you to pay attention for the addendum items, E, F, G, H, and I under number 1, and B under number 2 for substitutes.
All started.
Mr. Cass. So, we have some resignations, a bunch of new hires. We have some resignations this evening, including our own Kathy from the board office. Sad to see her gone.
She's been great.
And how many years?
28 years.
28 years.
Yes, I would concur. A big loss for the district.
Now, if everyone saw the letter she sent today? All right, and we have some new hires. We have a couple of substitute add-ons, and some FMLA we need to bust.
I just, I for one would say, for me, it is with regrets that we'll accept the resignation and the retirement on tonight's agenda. I mean, Kathy helped me very much in my tenure as a board member. When I would have problems with different forms and things that we would have to fill out, or just when I had a question, she would provide information. I know since I've been here for 13 years that she has helped bridge a lot of our ever-changing administration. So, she will, I'm sure, be missed in the board office. I'm sure Matt Farber, who has done some incredible projects, because I was never lucky enough, my sons did not have him done. Some of the things he did with students that we heard about at Board meetings and things, truly incredible. So, that'll be a loss. Mr. Lehman was a brand-new teacher when my oldest son, who just graduated college, went to fifth grade. And he had a lasting impact on my son. And when he was interviewed by paper after performing a one-man show, and they did a write-up on him, it was Mr. Lehman that he spoke about in the article as being somebody who really left a lasting impact and changed who he was. So, it is with definitely, you know, regrets. I wish them all well in their next phases, but a loss for the district.
Thank you. Well said. Anyone else? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to operation. Mr. Cass, it looks like we have one item under B and G tonight?
I do. Probably like tonight. I have one item to move that we approved, Diamond Constructionmen, for their quotes for Lakeview paving, the amounts $149,506.56 and $7,200.
Second.
Thank you.
So, we did cover this in the subcommittee, and it's just like managing the risk. Are we going to do anything else to Lakeview, to, you know, want to put this off? But, you know, with the summer months, it does make sense, at least from a subcommittee standpoint, to use the summer and get this done.
And we also have new, we have new staff members in charge of our facilities, and we'll make sure that no one causes any damage to the, to the new paving that will be done at Lakeview. Remember, it will only go up a little bit past the, it'll go up to about the end of where the cafeteria is, so a little bit past the flagpole, which will allow the upper parking lot in the back, and the road, and then the road down to the back will not be touched, which does two positive things. One is it allows for any type of construction vehicles to come on site. The second thing that is important, too, is it does help us get onto a site of replacing the parking lot, since it's a large parking lot, rather than having to come up with $250,000 on a clip, it'd be more like $150,000. So, I think it serves two purposes to do it in two stages. And at this particular time, with our new staff member and all the other things we have in place, I'm confident that no one will cause any damage to it, and we'll have it written in the contract of anybody who does work on it, that if they do cause damage, they would have to replace it.
Well, everyone, I'm glad to hear that we'll work that into any contract, because we did have that happen to us with some of our projects last year, but they were no sooner done than they were damaged by the next person.
Steve, is my recollection right that this paving is going to encompass that garbage area there?
Yes, that's the small one.
That's the smaller pieces for that.
Because they can't, the reason why that is so much more per square foot is because they can't use any heavy machinery. You have to hand dig it out, and there's bollards in there, you know, those things that cause people from that crushing the school. We have those in there. We have other types of things in the way, some masonry. And they won't be able to get the heavy machinery in there, so it's going to be a hand job, I think, of the guys that can't dig it out. So, it'll be about more work.
Okay, on that note, roll call, please.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to items for the next meeting. At the next meeting, we will be voting on items under personnel. A lot, a lot, yes. Can I just say a lot? I don't know if I can.
As listed on your agenda, yes?
Yes, as items as listed on your agenda, under personnel. But it does go all the way to number 11.
Something goes to number 11. It said number one goes all the way to WW.
Take a look. If anyone has comments, questions.
If you notice, number three is pulled out of the chart due to the fact that there's an order issue there. One thing has to be done before the other, so we pulled that number three out of the chart. Normally, that would be in the chart, but because it would have been out of order, we replaced it with three after two.
Ah, okay.
Ah, okay.
That's the reason why it's not in the chart.
Right, right. It would have come first before what you did in number two.
Yeah.
And for those of you not lucky enough, and I knew that sincerely, not lucky enough to be on instruction and program, we did discuss the curriculum writing, and we're going to have another discussion about it when next we meet, which I guess is up in there when next we meet. I didn't see it on Steve's report. We talked about curriculum writing and the cycle of curriculum writing again. So, please feel free to throw us any questions you have about curriculum writing that's on the chart.
I also gave you a spreadsheet in your report this week to show comparison of summer CST expenses year to year, so that everybody would see that there was a, was actually a reduction, too. It's all under the budgeted area.
I note that in number 11, we have, I say a lot, of students willing to come in and volunteer their time as peer mentors.
Is that unusual?
For the ESY program. This is the first time I've ever, that I recall, probably happened last year, too.
We had probably, if I had to estimate, maybe three of the columns last year, so maybe...
Oh, we had a lot last year. I think it's a fairly new thing for the district.
My cousin's son, my cousin's daughter's on there.
I would say, how do we let students know? Do they have to be part of the peer mentor program? Do they have to, how do they get the opportunity to...
Yeah, it comes through the counselors to grace, and then gets on the...
So, it's not something like advertised, if the counselor thinks the students are good, match for this, they would talk to them about it?
It usually comes through, like, the groups, you know, like you said.
Nice. It's great to have peers here for students who participate.
So, if anybody has any questions about this stuff before next week, just feel free to shoot us an email about it.
All right. Everybody's good right now. Let's move on to I and P. Mr. Luer?
For the next meeting, we will be approving, we will be bringing up for approval on four workshops. That's, sorry, four sets of workshops. There's five teachers. Going through a variety of them. Do you want me to actually read them all off, or... And there's, the field trip request is still in here, but I don't think we're going to have any field trip requests for...
I think we do. There are back requests, like, they've already been heard, but we do have some.
Real quick, which prompt?
So, we had a little discussion about this. Prompt is actually, I'm not arriving somewhere on time, but when you use a physical prompt to help a student remember something, and in this case, it's around speech. And I've seen it where they literally, like, will push down like here and here to make a certain sound. They help the student remember how to move articulation and that out, form the proper placement for the sound that they need to hear. need to make. We covered that in committee.
But did you cover, cover fidget spinners? That's what I was.
Yeah.
Well, those you can't possibly go anywhere in your life without covering fidget spinners.
Do we, do we ban or allow them?
I think they're allowed. Kids can put away.
In the classroom, right? It's like anything else, right? They're not supposed to have that.
I don't know if they.
It has to be, and that has to be, for students to be able to use, then they have to be in their I U Ps. And for the most part, they really haven't been utilizing the spinner. In their I P, it's been mostly other sources of fidgets. So we really haven't had an issue with kids wanting to use that particular one over others. Because actually, there are more beneficial ones for what they're needing. It's nice to have and fun to watch if anyone watches it.
The, the woman who invented that gave up her patent in 2005. She wasn't making any money yet.
Yeah, and that's why now they're everybody.
That's smart. Anyway, I digress. Okay, policy. Mrs. Deluna, would you care to walk us through our policy?
Sure. At our next meeting, we would be reviewing and voting on those items under letter C on page nine of tonight's agenda. Not to follow your lead, I'm not going to read them all, but the first chunk is for second meeting evaluation and the second chunk is first. I guess my only question would be the abolish.
The state has now combined health and, health and P E to be more of a wellness education. So 2425 no longer exists as policy or any kind of regulation.
Right.
So now it's going to be 2422 is going to be both health. It says health and education, though it's really health and physical education. We're seeing a word there. It's health and physical education is, is policy 2422.
We covered that in committee too. Dave, Dr. Cobb, let's really crack the lip on this next meeting.
He's got kind of a lot to say.
I missed a lot.
All right. Mrs. Deluna, I'm going to call on you again for finance.
Okay. Good. So I think this one has listed, there's 24 items listed for year-end activities. Let's just summarize a couple highlights here. Basic check, checklist. We discussed in subcommittee the cap reserve and the maintenance reserve setting like an upper limit. Then there's a lot of replacements over the year-end accounting and then like summer replacements and services for students and innovation of Walker to the high school. That was kind of, yeah, another thing in committee that you can actually make a fee off ourselves.
I would say it's not really a donation when we're selling.
Yeah, right.
Wait, where are you?
Number 17 is the sale of the law.
The fact that they were able to negotiate the sale of.
That's nice to know.
And then the idea.
It costs around $85, $80.
I see there's a lot of, I see there's a bunch of approval of resolutions to approve students attending various schools. Those are, this is the time of year when, when we approve next year's expenditures for out-of-district replacement placements. Is that what this is?
We are.
Some contracts that have to be implemented as of July first. So this is a good time to approve them and send the contract back.
Okay, thank you.
Six and seven. Were these materials that were donated this year or previous years? Are we just kind of encompassing them now?
Is it this year?
It is this year.
They had last year too.
Yeah, that's why, that's this morning. Okay.
The, the teacher, Ms. Falbino, has been asking for and saving up through the Booster Club to actually purchase our own audio because we rented it, which sometimes is good, sometimes is bad. But in this case, we felt like this was a good use of the funds. Their only personal family funds as well as the Booster Club supported it.
How did we come about, how did we come up with the numbers of half a million for the maintenance reserve and $2 million for the capital reserve?
Well, what happened in previous year, we allocated approximately $500,000 for capital reserves and approximately $700,000 for maintenance reserves. Last year, we had a lot more than that in excess surplus and we cannot deposit more than what we approved through a war resolution in June. Therefore, that has to go through the budget. The auditor recommended that we set a limit, a high limit. That doesn't mean that we're going to be having an excess surplus of $2 million. However, if we happen to have that much, we are able to put in as much as $2 million in capital reserve for future use.
Okay. What, is there some kind of statutory limit for how much you can put into each one? I seem to recall previously, we can't put in more than the maintenance budget than a certain amount, but I don't remember what that amount is.
We have a long-range facility plan. We cannot put more than the total cost that we have in the long-range facility plan. We have approximately $24 million in the long-range facility plan. It's a big number.
I would say we could never put in.
Correct. $2 million is a reasonable amount. If we had that much in excess surplus to put in capital reserves.
Okay. And the maintenance reserve, is, is there some kind of limit on that as well?
There is a. There is a, a limit as how much you can put in. There is a, another form called maintenance res, not maintenance, maintenance reserve is we can only put in up to certain amount of what we budgeted for maintenance facilities. In this case, last year, we cannot put in more than $1.3 million. Fortunately, we only allocated $700,000. So therefore, we do have a limit on how much we can put in based on the budget amount.
So you can't put more in than what you budgeted for?
That's total. Meaning if you, if you have, if you have a capital million dollars and you have $700,000, then you can only put $300,000 on another trip.
Okay, I got you. Laura, just because I know you, this is your first year at this. What Damaris was explaining is basically we go above and beyond. We put the, we put an upper limit number in, kind of estimating where we think we're going to be. We're giving ourselves some room.
Could be a lot of it.
Yeah, it could be a lot of it. But we do that so that we, because we can't put in more than we approved.
Damaris was kind of up to go around with me.
Go ahead. Okay. Okay. Any one else on these items? Obviously, if we have questions before next week, specific questions?
Yes, I have one. Sorry. Motion 24. Starting in September, we're going to have. We're outsourcing or?
That's a, that's for maternity leave. We couldn't, we didn't, we weren't able to successfully hire somebody, so we ended up having to outsource it.
That's different.
We've done it, we've done it.
No, I know we've done it before, but it's, if we can't hire someone, there's no discussion to be had.
One of the big problems is when we've tried to do it and it doesn't work, we're always behind and their parents are upset with everybody, which they should be because the kid, they, some kids get three a week. If you miss five weeks, now you're down to 15 sessions.
Yeah, I think that's happened since you were here. So yes, I understand.
Yes, we're trying to defend that, you know, try, instead of playing catch-up, actually.
Okay.
We're good there. Mr. Cass?
At the next meeting, under transportation, I'll be moving two items. One will be to lease a new bus and the other one will be to approve our evacuation results out of three distant schools. And under building and grounds, I'll be moving a number of projects as well as a contract for HVAC controls and also approve the use of our, approve of your school for an emergency drill by the demo fire department in July.
And we have the class three officer memorandum agreement with township, which what I was told will be passed by them in July, which will allow us to hire somebody in August.
And can I clarify on the buildings and grounds? We have to rescind motion two that we approved back in July of 2016. And the only reason for, and we approved them again. The only reason for the reapproval is because on the original motion, we failed to put down that we were using capital reserve funds. We'd have a separate motion earlier on saying that we were using capital reserve to do this project. However, when we approved the contract itself, I failed to put in cap, use capital reserve funds. And as I'm going preparing for the audit this time of year, I ran this through the auditor and he suggested that we rescind and reapprove those two motions. So the only difference is adding the word, we do actually have reserve funds.
As long as it's done prior to the close of the year, prior to June 30th, we can correct the statement. It's not, it's going to.
No, we understand two.
No, I get three. So where's the, where's, where's the language about the capital reserve?
He's just saying two then.
So why's the three just, it does, has two B it resolves to it?
Right. Okay, I understand.
So in number two, you rescinded two motions from July. When we're reapproving it, we're reapproving it in one motion, number three.
Correct.
Not like three A and three B. You're just doing it as three.
Right.
That's what the issue down here, we have a discussion.
Okay.
Can I ask a question or do I, a little point of clarity for anyone watching that when they hear we're leasing a bus, they think we'll give it back at the end of the lease?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
So motion number one, we, we talk about the fact that we're leasing a school bus, but for your average home person in the community who leases cars, you give them back. We don't give back the bus. And for my own personal clarity, in my time on the board, we've leased, purchased buses over multiple years to spread out the cost of the bus. So we're doing the lease of one school bus for?
Five years.
Each year, we're paying this much?
No, I'm sorry. That's.
That's the total amount.
That's the total cost of the lease purchase.
Okay. And we don't need to put that in, lease purchase over five years or anything? It's just that's the total?
The banking that one of the bid only requests that we approve the total cost of the lease. This will be a five-year lease.
So for those of us on the board and for those of us at home looking at our agendas, it's a five-year lease and we do not give the bus back?
Correct.
And now we're allowed to use the bus for five years?
Now we're allowed to use the bus for 15 years.
Oh, so we pay for it for five years, we get 10 more years?
Correct.
And the new buses, we're getting, we're getting through cameras or we're?
Yes, this, actually, this, this, um, is a panel for a bus.
So as I understand it, we're basically, we have enough buses that we basically have to get one, at least one new one every year, right?
We have, we have a bubble of buses that will be expiring all at once, approximately 2021. I want to say we have at least five or six buses that will be expired. Our goal to purchase one every year. So we, we made a mind that of.
Okay. So we basically, for the foreseeable future, we're going to buy lease one, at least one every year. So I don't understand why.
You do it over five years because they're all going to start building anything.
Yeah, I don't understand why, why we, why we need, why we split, split, excuse me, split the payments over five years when we're, I mean, we're going to end up paying roughly the same anyway because when you've got five buses on a lease, you're going to be paying one-fifth of each lease a year. Okay, can you explain that to me? I don't, I just don't understand.
Absolutely. There is a law, New Jersey Department of Education, that we can lease equipment, especially buses, up to five years. And capital lease can extend, extend it a bit longer. So there is some.
You can, but you don't have to.
Correct. We can do three years, but maximum is five.
So I think what he's asking is.
Why, where's the benefit in leasing at all? You know, most of the time when you lease something, you pay, you pay for the privilege. Why don't we just pay it upfront?
We don't buy it, we do not buy it for $93,000.
There will be one year that you will pay all five. If you, let's say you buy for five years. But the first year, you pay for one, then you pay for two, three, four, five. But then it will be coming down. You pay for four, three, two, one.
Let me explain something. Here's what happened.
You pay for five bucks.
The state at one point said, I don't remember the exact numbers, I think it was, it went from 11 years to 15 years.
10 years.
10 years to 15. So buses were only good for 10 years. So the board a few years ago decided to take that money out of the budget to purchase buses because for the next five years, you didn't really need to buy any, which is smart and bad. The bad side is now, well, if you don't start catching up, you're going to get hit with a big term. We don't have currently, this is only the second bus, Dave, right now, that we're leasing. So this is a great discussion during finance when we're doing budgeting. If anybody would rather us put a full, the full cost of a bus in there, we could do that. During the budget discussions this time, we talked about leasing the bus. So to go from a fifth of the payment to a full payment at this particular time would not be something we could do. But again, during budget cycle next year, if the, if the board would prefer that we spend, you know, the hundred or $95,000 upfront, then we, we would do that instead.
Well, I think Dave's question might be more basic, might be more basic, and maybe it's my question too. So what is the, what is the interest rate calculated lease payment?
The interest rate is 2.1. We did a bid, three banks came in bid, and the lowest responsible bidder was 2.1%.
We get good rates and.
So it helps.
And we don't. We legally can't, we won't.
Yeah, in the next, we're, we're, so basically, we're, we're looking at last year, this year, and then the next three years, we're looking at.
Well, if you have 30 buses and they last 15 years each, I would think eventually you're probably looking at closer to two a year.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, to, to make it, assuming that big-ticket items follow, the, the costs follow the standard progression, you would assume that it would, you get two a year, you would just keep it all the same. If and when we get to that point, when would we get to that point with this? I, I, you just said that there's a, there's a five or something bubble coming up soon?
There's, I believe it's 2021, but they brought me on that, that we have at least five or six buses that will come to an end. That doesn't mean that we cannot finish using those buses for the remaining of the school year, but there will be at least five buses that will have to be tailored.
So that would be like a half a million dollars in one shot.
That one would make sense to, that one would probably make sense to.
To lease.
To do the leases. But we will still be doing, even after we get that, that bubble, the year after the bubble, we'll still have to be, we'll still have another bus or two that are.
Yep.
So maybe before we go into the next budget cycle, it'd be helpful to have like a chart so the board could understand. When you hear you're going to lease purchase and you think, okay, I can spread it out, it's a big-ticket item, but if we have to keep buying on a year, I know when I first got on the board, we would have to buy two and three buses because it was the shorter time you could own limit. That's the way they were purchased. So that's the order you had to replace them. But then you wouldn't have to purchase something for the next couple of years because we would buy them three. And so then that made sense. You sort of spread it out over the three years until the next one came. But I kind of agree. I guess I did not realize when we were budgeting, you know, having the budget discussions, that we would end up overlaying all of these.
And 2.1% isn't, isn't a high percentage, but I mean, if we can find a way to do it, zero is better than 2.1 when you're paying an interest.
Sure. I mean, that's definitely a good conversation.
And I understand we can't, I understand the budget's already.
Right, but for next year, the discussion that the, and I can't even picture mine, but to have a chart to show how much of an overlay when we do these five years will we end up having. So we understand the decision we're making, but.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, I believe that brings us, unless there's other questions, the good to pause. So I will lead off with the discussion I was gonna have before, the Maris reminded me, CSA evaluations. The rest of us need to complete the online versions, and then we need to set a date to do the...
So maybe you could refresh the board's memory. We have to be done on...
We have to be done by June 30.
We have to be done by June 30, so all of you who haven't done your...
Yes, please make that happen.
You need to do it like tomorrow.
If you have any questions about it or having trouble getting access to it, please let me know or, or call, call the, the board office.
The New Jersey School Board's office?
I don't know, you can call us. You can call them, they, they, yeah, usually the Maris or, the Maris or Kathy usually get, get, get us, get us in. So, but that does need to be done. As far as then doing the evaluation with Charlene, or potentially, do you want to do that? That doesn't need to be done necessarily by June 30, right? We can do that, we have done that after.
I thought we had to present Steve with his...
By June 30. You're right, we did.
The two administrators that I'm looking at down the table here know a lot better than I do, but...
Yeah, you're right.
I think it used to be May 30th when I started on the board, and now it's June 30th, which means you have to do it, we have to get back the results, we have to have a discussion, we have to create a document, we all have to agree with, and then there has to be a meeting with Steve to present that.
All, all, all pretty June 30.
And it's June...
By June 30?
Yeah. Okay. We're a little behind, so...
I believe last year, that's why we needed that special meeting is June.
All right, so, okay, so here's what, here's what we're gonna, here's what I propose. Everybody does the evaluation in the next two days. We meet an executive at the next board meeting.
Yeah, you can get the summary document from Charlene for the 19.
To discuss, right.
Also, just, just to give you a heads up, on April 28th, in my board report, if you have a hard time reading, the, it kinda gets jumbled when it goes into the website, but all the information required is in the April 28th report.
All right, so if everyone could make that a priority item to get their evaluation done, I will get the, this, I don't think it's much more for Charlene other than her kind of putting, hitting a button.
Yeah, she, you can, you know, just reason there to find out if she has to push the button on Friday to get it to you for Monday or, she can do one.
We plan on doing that on Monday.
But yeah, we should plan on, what, staying after the meeting and having a discussion.
Yeah, we'll have a discussion after.
So that the document can start getting written.
Does that sound, that sound okay to everybody?
Yeah, because we'll still have two weeks to get them.
Plenty of time, plenty of time. We work, we work best under pressure.
Second, he said.
All right, uh, all right, while everybody's digesting that, I was able to go to both lead graduations, and some board members were able to go as well. They were both excellent events. I had, had never been to one at Lakeview, everybody did a great job. And apparently, we had, according to Officer Rutter, we had a record number of board members there, so that was pretty cool. We are more involved, I believe, on that. That was, they were great events, it was really great to see the kids finish up those programs.
Yeah, I was able to attend the Lakeview one, it was wonderful. I was also able to attend, keeping up our board goal of going to more events, I was able to attend the fifth grade play, which was also wonderful.
Anything else?
Oh yeah, I got some, yeah, locking and loading on this one. The, one of the newsletters came out from New Jersey School Boards, talked about the regulations forthcoming for carbon monoxide detectors. And this would be another unfunded mandate. I wrote the legal department to check to see if this was gonna be an unfunded mandate, and it is. I was told it's a good thing for the kids and the staff. And, you know, I don't think they've really gotten the message that they have to be, New Jersey School Board Association, they're involved with the, you know, a lot of this legislation, providing input, they gotta do a better job on getting this money. All right, so you're talking about, the regulations are forthcoming, but you're gonna need them in every school, I don't know how many you're gonna need, certainly something by the boiler rooms that are fired by natural gas. You'll need, you'll need to probably replace them every five years. The lifespan on these, they're gonna, if they're plugged into the electrical circuits, they'll need, need to have a battery backup, the battery's gonna have to be replaced periodically. They probably need, you know, maintenance and cleaning and things like that periodically. So it's probably not an astronomical amount of money, but it's just an ongoing chipping away of us spending more money on mandates, taking money away from other, other resources, okay? And our, our state aid has, has stayed flat. Steve can tell me how many years, maybe probably at least five years.
2009 was the first time, was the last time we were, this district was fully funded.
Okay, so it's...
Been flat.
Yeah, so that's eight, eight years of flat funding. So I, I think we should do a resolution at the next meeting of some sort, and maybe some calls now at the DEA, so you know, where, where's the money gonna come from? Maybe once the details are out, that's when you say, we need money for this. I just remember Al Amucci had the, the guts to sue the DEA a couple of years ago over the bullying mandate, saying it was another unfunded mandate, and they won. So we gotta start sticking up for ourselves, because it's, it's just not happening down in Trenton. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention is that Kathy's retirement, sad to see her go. She's really been the glue that's held that office together, been a respect over the years with a lot of turmoil, a lot of turnover, if she's not a super job, I don't know if we wanna chip in and do something, if any, you know, edges were discussed back at the office, that she'll be sorely missed, and I certainly wish her well in her, her retirement moving on.
Don, although I agree with you that the mandates, as they generally say, for districts, it's death by a thousand paper cuts. No one of them is so egregious that it's undoable. But I would think in this case, carbon monoxide detectors would fall into the same thing when the board took upon itself to test the water for lead. We're first charged for keeping all students safe. Maybe it should be considered an oversight that we don't already have them in our buildings. I mean, the safety of everybody, that they don't end up in a space with carbon monoxide, that's on us. So yeah, it's an unfunded mandate, but maybe shame on us for not doing it. We have, you know, smoke detectors and fire alarms. In my own home, I have carbon monoxide detectors, I wouldn't go to sleep at night without them.
If I recall, we made a decision to test the water, our, our own state indicts to do it.
That's what I mean, so...
And we, we didn't make a decision to put carbon monoxide detectors in store.
No, we didn't, but...
So they, they decided for us, and again, it's just...
Well, it's the way you frame the problem.
It's, it's unfunded, and it's, um, it's been a sore point with me for, for many, many years, and we've written our legislatures, you know, or something, then we've written our senator on it, and I can't recall getting money for anything, except when Al Amucci sued the state, the DEA, and got everybody some money.
If, Don, if you would like to send me a little info on it, I'd be happy to send it over to the Guard State Coalition, which were a member of us on July 1st.
Okay.
They have a little bit bigger of a body than you can...
No, I was gonna say, that's what we're paying money to be a part of that for.
Yeah, I don't know, personally, I'm not sure this is, this is the one I would...
I just said that for me, it's a health and safety issue for our students and staff, and so shame on us for not thinking, giving a hell of a...
I understand the theory, Don, I agree with you 100%, I'm just not sure this is the example.
Every time, every time they, they do something with the safety, we're staff and students, we're gonna roll over. I'm making...
Let's see what, let's see what the Guard State Coalition's take is on it.
Well, I was gonna say, and, you know, we are a governing body where you need a majority of the board to say, you can be upset as one of seven, but until you have two of the board members chime in, you're a person.
Let me see if you can, Jim, Don, if you send me the, the actual bill number, if you can do that, Don, I'll send it over to you, if I wasn't aware.
Will do. Yeah, well, the, the legislation's been passed now, it's...
Oh, it's already set?
It was passed back in 2015, so this is the way things work down in Trenton, you got two speeds, slow and stop. So now, two years later, we're putting together the regulations to tell you how to do it.
There we have, uh, correspondence on our discussion items.
I was, I got one more thing for, for the, for the pause. I was able to attend both the Riverview fifth grade talent show and their, as well as their field day last Friday. I think, I actually saw it down there as well. That was, that was a very good time, the kids had a blast, there was lots of running around, lots of, lots of fresh air, no carbon monoxide, and everybody had a really good time, and... I guess I don't really have anything else.
Thank you.
We have substandard space, we also have the Ross Haber report. What I'm more interested in is the, what you guys attached, what you, can you take us through what you guys, uh...
Sure.
What you're recommending here, or are we beginning to write them back?
So what we did, we started off, me, Sandy and the Maris, we said, you know what, why don't we have, and Jerry Marinelli? And I said, why don't we, why don't we get the principals or, and the directors and everybody in our room, the vice principals, and sit down with this study and talk a little bit about what does it mean to us, what, what do we think is the best thing for the district going forward? Obviously, we've already had some of these discussions publicly at the Strategic Planning Committee, one of our objectives on our Strategic Planning Committee is to figure out a way to have our children in, not in substandard space, and to eliminate the use of rentals. That's one of our objectives under the goal of create, save and secure a burning ground. So we put together this report. The first thing I think we all have to agree to, and I don't, I don't think we can get by, I don't think we can continue the discussion if we don't just take one as a given. Because I know, I know there's, every time there's, well, what about this, what about that? I think we're past the what about this and what about that. If we can't say, number one, that this report is the data we have from the person we chose to write, and the Denble Township Housing Element Fair Share Plan is the only document we have from the town, we have to say that those, those documents at this particular minute, right now, on June 12th, 2017, are accurate, and they only rely on that that we have. Once we, once we admit to that, once we can say that that's happening, then we can start to discuss it. So the second one was, we all, we've already said this, that Riverview and Lakeview students are currently utilizing substandard space for students and staff. That's the second given. Our policy, our current policy, again, these are recommended limits though, not, it does not say any part of our policy that if you have 23 students in kindergarten and you get a 24th student, you have to split that, does not say that. It says these are recommended limits for class size. So K1, our limits according to Board of Ed Policy 2312, is 23 students per class. K2 is 26, 26 students per class. The reason why I did not put Valley View in there is because at this particular time, they are not utilizing substandard space. Denble Board of Education Policy 5120, created a flexible tenant zone. This is helping us balance out the classrooms. Dr. Collis, I think, has done an unbelievable job and ran with this whole idea of the flexible tenant zone. And although our class sizes are a little larger than we'd like at 20 students per kindergarten, they're all 20 students per kindergarten. There's no more 24 and 17. That's, that was the whole purpose of the, of the policy that we've changed. And with Dr. Collis's work with the public, she was able to create even eight sections of 20 students. I think one of them has 19.
At the moment.
At the moment. So, so the, the next thing...
Even 21.
Is that we finally came down to two ways to solve this problem. One was to construct a small addition at, at Lakeview, utilizing some space in the back where the trailers are, to free up space in the news bar and move some, some programs out to the back. The second one would be to, you'd have to, obviously, we wouldn't have the funds for this. The first one, we're, I'm not gonna say we're 100% sure we could fund A, I definitely can't say that, because we didn't spend the money on actually getting somebody to draw the plans and come up with a real cost estimate, because there is a cost associated with that. But at this particular time, we don't think that A is, is the right option. One of the big reasons is, it would only accommodate the things we have currently, and it would not address any, would not provide any room for growth at all. B is to utilize a referendum to construct a larger addition at Riverview, and that would house, at this particular time, under these circumstances, that with the information I have now, would have, have pre-K program, which is four classrooms, all of which require a bathroom, the special edu, and the special education department. This project, if we chose to do this, would allow for some room for growth. Meaning if, when, if and when, or actually when, the people, the new developments come down, pipe, we could grow a little bit, not a lot. That, that has to be said several times, because we all have to understand that. If, if there's a thousand units built in the town, we can't absorb that. We will not be able to absorb a thousand new units. If there's 300, including the 100 that's already been built, we could absorb it. At this particular time, going by this particular study, using the data we have, we would have to assume right now, and again, there's a lot of givens and there's a lot of, we have to make decisions based on, on the data we have currently. If the, if the, if the children came into the district from these new developments that we expect to happen, if they came in evenly, right? That's not gonna happen, but just said, because I don't know, nobody knows how it's gonna happen. But if they came in evenly, at this particular time, right now, we would have to absorb 1.65 students per section, which we could do. Obviously, though, who knows, maybe it's 10.65 in kindergarten and zero in couple grades, we don't know that. There's no way of knowing exactly how the spread would be. So here's some variables. The NJ DOE does have to approve construction. Our architects at EI said that there is some state aid, and I didn't even, wasn't even aware of this, for new construction. If you have unhoused students, which we do, because the state would consider anybody who's housed in substandard space as unhoused, there would be some state aid for new construction. Now, he did go on to tell me that there's all kinds of rules and there's formulas, and when it comes down to it, it's not that much money. He did say that, that we would get approval for this due to the fact that it's in our long-range facilities plan already, and that we do have children in substandard space. The second variable, obviously, is Denble's CO requirement. Remember, if you remember back, that we're, we've put before you a document that says somewhere between 300 and 4,000 units will be built? That is a huge variable, obviously. So construction and debt service aid from the DOE is another, is also a variable. Plans and cost estimates from EI are variable, because I don't have them yet. We have a meeting with them tomorrow. If you remember, we asked EI to put on hold their, their final product prior to, to allow us to include the Ross Haber study. So given, given all of the above, at this particular time, using this data and the givens we just told you, the district administrative team feels that the larger addition at Riverview to accommodate the pre-K program, special services department, would also leave us room for growth, would be the way to go. Here are some of the details. It would be a two-story addition, the reason being, it would allow us to have a bill, all of our buildings would be accessible, meaning Riverview's second floor is not accessible at this particular time. The addition would also include, so that would give us the, Riverview would have an elevator as well. The addition would include the equivalent of eight full-size classrooms. One of this, of the eight full-size classrooms, sized... One of this, of the eight full-size classrooms sized areas would be for the special services department. Seven would be classrooms. All would be, at this particular time, most or all would be convertible to full half-size with bathrooms. Meaning we would, we would, we, one year may need six full-size and one, and two half-size and then the next year maybe we need five full-size and four half-size. We would want to make them convertible. Other projects to consider, A is a definite. If we go with three, we must do three, four A because we will need to, meaning if we do either of the projects that we do in Lake or River, we have to address their small group construction room needs at Lakeview. Meaning what's going to happen is it's going to free up full-size classrooms, but they need small-size classrooms. It's not like we have enough full-size ones to say, oh, just give them the full-size. We need to split them in half so that we have enough room. Another thing I think we, we would consider, and we've discussed for the last five years, three, even two years before I was here, was security vestibules at each main entrance, which would create basically what is called a man trap, which is basically the area we have to get buzzed in twice. You would be buzzed in, you'd be in a holding area, then you'd be buzzed in again. You'd have to get buzzed in twice to have access to the building. That actually came up today, you know, our security audit with the state. One of the reasons why I think we, one of the reasons why it's very hard for me to recommend the other project at Lakeview, not only do I think it's not the right place to build because we don't want to grow Lakeview at all, is that if we spend every dollar we have to do this addition, we won't be ready for this 1.8 to $2 million roofing project that's coming down the pipe in the next couple of years, two, three, four years at Lakeview. If you recall, I'm not sure, I don't think any of you were on the board, but maybe you were, when the addition was done at Lakeview, it was a large addition, 60,000 square feet addition. Very often, when you're doing new construction, you use builder's grade materials with builder's grade warranties. So we had a 15-year warranty. If you recall, the last rooms since I've been here have been 40-year warranties, but we still have this one last 15-year warranty section. It's not, and I like to say this because I'm sure we all did this in our home. If you have a warranty on your, on your refrigerator for four years and on the fourth year it goes away, you don't just throw it out and get a new one. You wait until it goes bad. Almost everyone does that. It's not like I'm saying we need to do it today, but our roofing experts, not just one, but two, because I like to have the independent people, because I don't want just people trying to sell us stuff, said, look, you don't have to do it today, but be prepared because it's coming down the pipe and it's a large section. And then some other possible ideas would be the Valley View locker room, maybe air conditioning. Again, this came up recently, but it's also been something that's on the agenda, that's been on our long-range facilities plan for a while. Our family consumer science room, which is also formerly known as Home Ec to us, that went to school like that, is in need of a renovation. So those are some, those are just a few projects. These are all on the long-range facilities plan. None of these, none of these projects I put up here are not things that we already have in our holding pen, getting ready for projects that we know we have to do. So, basically to summarize, in order to accommodate all this, all the current population, meaning to put, to put every child and every staff member we have currently in non-substandard or standard space, we would end to have, end to have an office space for the special services department. If you recall, the office we're building up here is only suitable for eight people. Meaning we will need to find room for three people. If you recall, temporarily, the special services department will move to Riverview this summer so we don't have to continue playing rent. So, in conclusion, again, the eight-room addition at Riverview along with number four A, like I said, four A is required, will give us some room for growth and allow for all students and staff to be seated in standard space. We do have a meeting with EI tomorrow. That's Sandy, Demaris and myself. We will talk to them about the options and what they think and at that particular time, we'll be ready to bring it back to the board with their feasibility study, which we've already approved a while ago and hopefully that'll give us a little more info. That's my report, a summary of the Denble Schools enrollment study. No. He does have preliminary plans drawn up and preliminary cost estimates for what we said, some type of an addition on the front of the school and some type of an addition on the back of the school. He did say that the one where the cottages are wouldn't be viable due to the fact there wasn't enough room. He, he didn't think it was cost-effective to rip off the current addition. He did say we may need to utilize the cottage space for parking, if we take parking.
Now, I know one of the concerns was what we'd be doing in Riverview for probably an academic year in terms of dislocation. Any, any other thoughts on that or something, what this would look like?
This would just be more of an annoyance than, than a big intrusion.
We were talking about the possibility of building top.
Yeah, that's, that's off the table.
So this wouldn't be students being relocated?
Look, at the end, there may be some time that a room is in the way and they need to do something.
We're not trying to empty any of the school.
That, you're right. At that particular, the, the other idea was, was really probably cause a disruption to at least 40% of the school. And it would also have other costs associated with it, meaning the rental of trailers, all different things that we won't have in this particular project.
Just for memory, wasn't Valley View one of those kinds of questions towards having a largest tenant area and all that?
No, he still has that.
Yes, I keep bringing it up.
Yeah.
It somehow isn't classified as a substandard space. But yeah, the problem with Valley View always was and it still hasn't been solved, our large spaces are large enough.
Especially that space.
And yeah, well, we've been on the board, Barb. We looked into what we could do to create a large space.
When we look, I just remember the substan, there's a lot, there's a lot of value you have time when we viewed it more depth and values where the cross was. So is there no longer a cross or just?
Well, at this time, right now, since I've been here, there were students in substandard space. At this moment, there are no students or staff teaching or requiring students to go to substandard space.
And we're not using trailers?
Trailers are only used for storage and for professional development and conference area. So it's, and we did spend a little bit of money to renovate them just by painting and things like that to keep the maintenance up.
But your point is, we do have a large space issue, remember, at Valley View that is, is bigger. I mean, you have AC in the gym, the cafeteria, the way the lunches are on, all, all of that. And that's not easily solved.
I mean, you're basically have a small building up over there.
Yeah.
There's, there's definitely things we can do at Valley View. I mean, it's not like, there's not space on the grounds. But we did, we did some projects at Valley View. If you recall, we redid the library, we added a class doing that and having more teachers have to share rooms. Remember, it's not at the same time, though. There's a big difference between a teacher teaching English having to go next door to a social studies room to teach their class than it is to have a social studies class and a some English class in the same room. We don't have that. But we do have teachers who maybe assign the room A1 for period one and B1 for period two. And they would have to move.
Right. And I hear what you're saying and I agree that that's completely different. But to Barb's point, which I felt like I brought up also, but we don't really discuss it. I mean, Barb's referencing back to when the board was told over and over again that that lunchroom basically is driving the schedule. Kids eating lunch at 10:30 in the morning, not being able to have gym during all the lunch periods because you can only have half a class in the lunchroom at a time. You know, all those things are, we don't hear much about the impact on the schedule that that lunchroom is causing.
I think because we have, we have, we have, like I said, this is a given. If you look through it, the, the increase, the Valley View schools population, according to Ross Haber's report, an expert in demographics, and remember, these are only good for five years, the DOE only recognizes this for five years, says that Valley View will not increase substantially over the next five years. So at this particular time, in this place, sure, are we, are we, are we happy that the sixth graders eat lunch at 10:30? No. But compared to kids being in trailers, to me, the, the more acute problem is dealing with the two-alleged.
Right. Your focus is on the substandard.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying we shouldn't consider addressing the value.
No, no, no. So I guess what, if you're scared, if the road's taking the road and you're serious and you want some support.
Yeah, support.
He's got to work it.
Did you?
I'd like for us to be able to review the unha, you know, the non-standard, the latest numbers for the district. Maybe it's in our book, I don't know. I think the New Jersey State are substandard space for the district as of today.
Okay.
New Jersey State. Because, I mean, it's a hilarious point. There's, there's never been a time when there wasn't substandard space here. Not to say that they're not at well-anchored or whatever. You look at the numbers, we, I think we peeked, at least from the book, correct? You know, 1904 was the number and now 2010. So the, the numbers have come down and it's, but if you talk to me, like there's some, the space is changing, the landscape is changing, like you want a small classroom or something. But like the nerd engineer in me is like, oh, you have a space in the library. Hey, let's be like 7-Eleven, you can be open 24 hours a day. Boom, you got a whole space. You know, never close. You know what I mean? Like, I, there has to be options C, E, E, F, G, dah, dah, dah. I'm sorry, I guess the last one we were planning where we're brainstorming is happening, but I have to believe with the amount of money we're saving, we can do this in piecemeal to minimize the disruption and probably do it without an R for that's why.
I mean, I think, I think we could, I think, I'm sure that we could reclaim something like a library and make that into classrooms.
I'm saying your town library is, or think differently is all I'm saying. Like just think, all the space is in town.
Let me also remind everybody that not only, not only did we have this substandard space and not only did we have a reduction in students, but remember, our pre-K population required one room and our kindergarten population required four rooms. Our pre-K now requires four rooms, went from one to four, and our kindergarten requires eight. So it went from four to eight, which is a pickup, a pickup of seven different classrooms. What was that?
I said nine rooms per school, so it's a kindergarten?
So you have a pickup of seven or eight classrooms just in that area that require bathrooms and we're still not, we're still not in compliance with the bathrooms.
All right. I think we have a lot to think about. Does anybody have any other questions they'd like to vet out now or take this and digest it?
Well, I have a question about it. On, let's see here, page four, there's some, the distribution, we got 70% for K to five, 20% for six to eight, 10% for nine and 12. Do we have any idea, I mean, it says most people tend to move with younger children.
Go ahead. Now I know what you're saying.
Okay, so most people tend to move with younger children, but that's, I mean, we're looking at six times as many K through fives high school that's seen.
That's, that's his, that's not something he made up, that's the Rutgers formula. He has a formula, he has to apply it evenly.
I mean, there are a lot of people who stay put when their kids are in high school.
Well, it's interesting because the demographic we used at this point, I have no idea who it was.
Whitehall.
Before we last discussed, as Barb, so I'll put it the R word, actually told us to, that, you know, we were going to have, and it did actually come into existence, more people moved in with middle school students than elementary students, which is why we were going to have the issues at the middle school, which were now coming down off, you know, that and our incoming classes are smaller than our outgoing classes. I assume I haven't really looked at it closely, so.
But that wasn't a, but that bubble through, through the middle school wasn't a roofing bubble, right? That was a birth bubble.
Well, yes, but it, it was also, it wasn't just the kid, the numbers didn't just track. It actually grew. Yes, we had bubbles.
So they're saying the opposite of what this is.
Yeah, which is interesting that you're saying that it's the Rutgers formula. Either they changed their formula or they were able to look at what was happening in Denble in specific. I think basically what they said was that it was no longer a community that you could, you know, it wasn't as easy to have a starter home. You hadn't been better established and you already had children when you moved in or.
That's interesting.
It was a long time ago and I don't remember all the details. But I remember specifically thinking that was odd that they were saying that at the time.
While I was working on this with Ross, by the way, there was another, there was another proposed housing development. That actually happened between the time we started working with Ross until the time we finished it. So, if you look at page four and you notice in the italics, it does say, we do not expect this development to have any impact on students, on schools. And the reason being, out of a 17-unit development, all one-bedroom, he has to apply his formula. His formula, Rutgers formula, does not account for children in a one-bedroom apartment. So, does that mean that somebody could buy one and have 10 kids? Sure. But that doesn't mean that he can account for it.
I was going to say.
It's a formula.
I think my first year on the board was right after the Lakeview addition you spoke about earlier opened its doors and certain developments in town opened. And I think before the end of the year, the whole addition that was supposed to have room for girls was filled and overfilled. That from Lakeview ballooned up to like 813 students or whatever.
That could add in here too.
Yeah. So, right, and that's because they, I guess, now that you're saying that, they had to use a formula like that. We got many more students out of one-bedroom rooms than we thought. So, just as a point of clarity for myself, I heard Dino say this is a lot to think about and we're going to have to think on it before we tell you how we feel. And yet tomorrow you meet with EI. So tomorrow when you meet with EI, not knowing if the board supports your recommendation.
Because it's right in my notes, it says, it just came up today, was that, which we talked more intentionally about in Mexico because we got it in court. I have no idea the cost, I have no idea what it looks like and I also have no idea.
So basically tomorrow, when you sit in each of them, are you going to charge them with the, to actually complete what we approved and then ask you to put it on hold until we got this report? They'll start giving you numbers?
Yeah, he has to give us construction estimates.
Only the one you're recommending?
We can, we can also ask him to give us construction cost estimates on the, if we do the Lakeview.
I don't, I mean, that just runs up the bill more. I don't know if the bill is comfortable.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think what you're saying is, is there any initial reaction to this that gives some suggestion?
Well, I'm just saying, do you need any, I mean, to me.
Based on tonight's vote, I think we're saying that we don't really want to do large construction on Lakeview. It's already very big.
Oh, I would, I, I totally agree with the fact that Lakeview is already.
I think it's important.
And whether or not I want to go down the path of referendum after being once burned, I don't know. But I agree completely that first flush, there's no way I would want to build Lakeview. It's just unbalanced already.
One of the thoughts that came up in our, in our administrative brainstorm was to build on that property near the Burge Run, which, you know, to me, I said, I don't think that that, the reason why I don't like it is that, number one, all the site work is going to double the cost because it's all, you know, it's virgin land and it needs sower, it needs, the road has to be fixed, all that work that would have to be done. If you did, if you did it where the trailers were, it would be the least intrusive. Would you build it? Basically replacing the trailers with a real structure. That's basically what you would do. And there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be any additional shores. Yeah, we already have it. So even though that's probably a nicer idea to have it set off to the side and you could kind of say it's an early learning center, we already talked about probably the director of special ed could be the principal, four, there's four, it could be four classrooms in there. You know, obviously, the two principals in the elementary school could help if there was a, some kind of an emergency. But her office would be there, his or her office, depending on losing that job whenever we do this. And, and then we would have that person, you know, run the, run the building. That, that sounds nice, but I know the, we already, I already talked about that exact thing when we were talking, when we were having the discussion about our, our 501 Open Aki problem, trying to figure out what to do with that. We talked about possibly building there. And because of all those factors, there were. a million dollars of extra work that you would need to do before you could even do it. So it drove up the cost substantially. So I don't, I don't see that as an option, even though I think it sounds nice, but I don't think it's a good option.
Like, the personnel costs alone, we were discussing, because they're medically fragile students, we really would need to have a nurse on site, it would, it would be difficult not to have Grace and an assistant, because then she could never leave the building. I mean, she obviously has to run the whole district, and there are a lot of personnel options, which is also the reason that adding on to Lakeview is an issue, because right now we really have, we're losing about three periods every single day with specialists traveling from Riverview to Lakeview. We need to try to balance these, because it's, it's, we're paying, you know, several hours a day of personnel costs just to go back and forth, and since the times are not the same, it doesn't exactly match up, so you lose another period. You lose about four periods a day, half a day each time that a Riverview staff member teaches at Lakeview, you know, so it's, it's, there's waste there, and we just have to keep remembering that we're talking about small space, even though we're going to look at the numbers, or continually going to say, wait, our population has gone down, we've gone, since I've been here, we've gone from eight resource rooms to 14. That's six more classrooms, small classrooms, we have to have, legally we have to have, there's nowhere to put them, and we're just growing, I mean, our special education population keeps growing.
I'm hoping that they, like, I'm thinking about this building, now you're sort of in attendance here, like, maybe there's space in here that's really close to Riverview, like, I wanted you to think a little bit beyond, you know, A, like, there's an infinite amount of solutions for this, and I know you have some bright people.
But you got to understand...
Tomorrow, just think about, I just want you to be open on, you know...
I'm, I'm, we're still, I'm still open, and that's why I was stressing that when we...
Like, coming from defense, I'm shocked they can't do anything ahead of the speed. Like, that just wouldn't happen, like, in missile programs and...
Oh, you mean the EI?
Like, I'm just shocked that you're being worried, I have no idea, like, you have nothing pre, pre-advanced, like, it's just a different world, I...
But I thought that was on us, we asked them to stop so we didn't expend funds for something that we may not want to have.
We wanted to have this.
It is, you know, hard, so the pain's still, you know, it's good.
I'm still, I, I want everybody to know, I'm still open to anything, but we've already vetted out a lot of other options, we've thought about a lot of stuff, if somebody comes up with something new that, that is worthwhile looking at it, but I think if we don't start focusing on something, we're going to do nothing again. And it's been 12 years now, so there's, at a point where a decision is going to have to be made. But again, if, if somebody can think of a viable option, I mean, I know the board could have had the opportunity to buy the school you worked at, too, that's long gone. So I don't, I don't really, I don't...
The board did that, we actually had a study on that.
I just don't see, I mean, there's a building, there's a building at Rockaway we might...
The amount of money they talk about, you need, like...
I thought about it.
You don't need a huge amount of space.
No.
Like, there are properties, perhaps, you know, the price of...
Do we know the amount of money we're talking about?
No.
She just said the amount of money we're talking about.
What's that?
You just said the amount of money we're talking about, I don't even know what's that amount of money we're talking about.
No, but I would say the amount of space.
Oh, the amount of space we're talking about.
It's commercial space, it's like the old house, almost, like, yeah, not the other, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, like, you're not talking about the old school, and so there's going to be properties from this hall to the library, I, I don't know, I'm just going to just think about the space, I don't have an exact...
Yeah, but to Sandy's point, you're, you're building in a, a personnel cost which really could, could affect you in a big, big way, right?
Well, just we'd never, I mean, I mean, just...
Yeah, well, it would be forever, it would be, you'd have redundancy because you'd have redundancy in separate buildings, right? And you have to, like you were saying. I don't know, I mean, I understand the point.
They cover the pre-K as coverage, because they have to give a lunch to the teachers, so who covers that? So like, we have to pull every, every other person's lunch to try to cover a lunch, and it's, it's crazy things that you have to think about, you know, the small things.
I mean, I think Steve's point, and that, we have to go, I think, with the information we have and the best decision we have, I think we could keep spinning this out forever, I think, I think there's a danger to basically us just not doing anything.
Paralysis by analysis.
Yeah, thank you, I think that says it really well. So I do think we have to kind of, to some extent, keep it simple, we do have to focus on, you know, the key points.
And I, I think, I, I think that, to me, I'll, I'm going to make it even stronger, I'm never going to recommend another temporary fix, so that's going to be tough, because I, we're going to be at a standstill, because I, I would not recommend something like, you know, taking over the Lakeview library and making it into old classrooms, or, or going up to Rockaway, Tepboro, and renting out, leasing that, that elementary school, the Catholic elementary school that's open now, and all, just more temporary fixes, so I know, I know that, you know, from my standpoint, I'm not going to, I'm not going to offer up another temporary solution, it's going to have to be permanent. If, if somebody can think of another permanent solution other than 5A and B, I'd be happy to hear it, but we have been talking about this for a long time, and it's been on, it's been on our long-range facilities plan, I would only assume for at least 12 years, if you have trailers for 12 years, it had to have been on there for 12 years.
Steve, here's, if, let's say we did 5A, right? That leaves us with housing the current pre-K that we have right now, is that right?
Yeah, we would move it into the addition. The reason being is that we do bathrooms.
But we're full, that's my point, right? We're full right now in pre-K. So if we get, and I could be wrong, but if we get one more student, is that right, in pre-K?
Not for next year, but you remember, pre-K's a rolling thing, because kids age in.
Right, because they age in.
For next year, at this particular time, our projections for next year is that we're good with four rooms.
With four rooms, but you're full at four rooms, those four rooms...
For next year, our projections right now are, we're good, meaning we're okay, and we're not going to be full. This year, right now, there was a point, if we got one more kid, we'd have to split it.
Well, that's just my point, is that with that in mind, 5A sounds like a temporary solution, because you get two or three more pre-K kids, and like you said, it's a rolling thing, you have no idea when they're going to come in, and that was something we had kind of asked Ross Haber to look at, and he said we're really not able to predict pre-K at home.
Yeah, it's hard.
It's hard, so with that in mind, I don't see how 5A isn't also temporary.
No, I think, let me quantify what I meant by temporary. Temporary to me meant not a permanent structure.
Not a permanent structure, yeah.
Not, not that, not that it's like, you know, I make sure everybody knows, it's not like building a trailer or leasing a building somewhere, that, to me, that's not...
Yeah, while, I guess my point is that while 5A is a permanent structure, I think it puts us right back behind the eight ball, like you already down the line, if not sooner.
It could, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to go by other than what the data I have right now.
Right, which...
Going by the data I have right now, we would, we, we would, you know, we're sure everybody in, and that's it.
And that's it, exactly.
That's it, right.
I would agree with that, when you think about all the money we've spent on temporary solutions, I was very sad when we put in trailers and we couldn't drop prefabs instead, which was a permanent solution, because we didn't have the time.
And there were a million dollars, too.
We spent a ton of money on sewers to the back of Lakeview and everything else. I mean, as I said at one point, even when we got a couple of those trailers for free, it still cost us 50, 60, 70...
It's going to cost us to get rid of it, too, it actually did cost us to get rid of it.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I agree with the, I would, you know, like to not create another, I mean, and when I hear, and I said this probably, I mean, it kills me that in the 13 years I've been on the board, I can't tell you how many times we've moved this, all of the administrators, but the special ed department in specific.
Yeah.
Because they had a room, just like you're talking about here in Lakeview, that housed their offices, then they were moved into a trailer, then they were moved in with you guys, then they're...
Denble Seafood, I heard, above Denble Seafood.
Well, that was, that was many years ago, that was before my time on the board, that was, that was 18 years ago. They were above Denble Seafood.
They were, right?
Yes, they were.
That's what I was told, yeah.
I would like...
That is the truth.
I would like to move that we instruct the administration to proceed with option 5B for the meeting tomorrow with EI.
Well, that's already happened.
Yeah, that's already happened.
Yeah, it's, it shouldn't have already been...
That's what I was trying to clarify, yeah.
I don't think it would be a horrible bonus thing to come up with a third situation that's not on paper yet.
I don't want to...
I'm saying, it's something...
I can't, you know, look, you can't...
And it came out, don't shoot it down.
You can't hurt to ask, I mean, you know, so...
Well, there are a different set of eyes looking at the problem, let's just try to act.
I'm pretty sure the facility is just extended to school day, I'm, there's, you just have this building in Valley, you know, like, you know, you're...
Builder, I want people going chips.
Well, I'm just saying, there's other things besides the letting arbor, it's very hard sell with the, despite, like, the small classroom, so to, to Mary Ann's point, like, the, the money is tied to the space, the, it sounds like eight full-size classrooms you're going in on a space, so like, what are options, you know? Prefabs is one option, are there other options, or I think there are.
We're not supposed to run the district, I mean, I have some suggestions.
No, I, I'm, yeah, I'm going to put, I'm going to put that out to him, saying, do you have any other ideas for solutions other than the ones that we've talked about?
I know you're not big on leasing, but I mean, it does seem like there could be...
Well, you could lease the home, too.
Well, it's actually leasing.
You could actually lease the home roof.
Leasing, leasing could be a permanent solution.
It's the leasing policy, if you own and have the act of the lease.
The only problem with a lease to own, and I want everybody to realize, that say you did something for $5 million for five years, right? You did something for $5 million for five years, a million dollar payment a year, our, our cap is only 500,000, think about that. So let's even just say it's 2.5 million a year for five years, or, or 5 million for 10 years, still, still $250,000 a year, that's half of our cap each year for 10 years, that means for 10 years, you totally stuck, and you're also not getting the debt service fee.
I was about to say, it doesn't count, right? You don't get the potential 40%.
Can you maybe list, Steve, for us when you meet with EI and they come back with all the ideas that have been kind of tossed around and kicked out, just so that we kind of have a better understanding of, these are all the things that have been brainstormed, that ruled out for instance, whatever, that might make you feel...
You know, the, the district actual substandard space is probably on one size only, I don't like, you know, what, what the actual...
You mean that, you're talking about what, we have to get approved each year as substandard spaces?
No, the state will tell you exactly what's on the school and what's substandard in the school.
Well, actually, you guys approve it every year, we have to, you have to approve the substandard spaces.
I put reports online, I don't know, you know, it's changing.
No, we'll do it, too, it's a little easy, for the last five years, we'll give you all the resolutions you've approved.
No, no, I'm saying, no, that was a man, I'm just saying, if, if the goal is to minimize substandard space, you have to have a definition of what you're based on, just as a rate discipline.
So right now, what's up standard? I could tell you right now, if you want.
Well, I'm saying, it's got to be ready somewhere, it's probably linked to somewhere that's not that, our leisure, we can review.
Well, I'm, I'm going to, and I don't, maybe I'm not explaining myself, but you guys actually do have to improve every substandard house.
Yeah, no, I don't think that, well, I mean, there's a state of New Jersey, as a, as part of the, of the survey plan, it's actually part of the architecture, architecture probably have that.
We can...
We guess we have domain on there, I think maybe it's time to wrap.
Wow.
We're talking about Valley View, we're talking about Pat's here.
We've been going to fix Valley View's issues, too.
Well, just one last comment, I, I shared with you guys something I always liked, I think it's a great, it's a great little close here. The number one reason for failure is afraid to do something. So, will it be hard, sure, do I want to do this? Absolutely not. Absolutely, 100% do I do not.
Totally want to do it.
Oh, yeah, I was going to say, I agree, you totally want to do it.
Do you have any idea what my life is going to be like for this amount of time?
It ain't that hard, I think maybe...
But I know, I know everybody thinks I want to do it, but I, I don't want to do it, but I think it's, I don't, I just don't see another way that doesn't have a lot of drawbacks, and doesn't really hamstring us financially for the next however many years, to put this money on the outside of the budget and to actually get some aid back from the state on it, to me, it makes a lot of sense, especially at this time when we are going to be coming off all the debt that we'll have, and, and you saw the increase, it was about a $6 increase or something.
Well, if ever there's a moment, this is the moment.
Yeah, it's the time.
Steve, would you get the actual numbers from EI, will you then be able to tell us what the percentage of state aid will be, because from what I understand...
We can only give you a ask, we can only give you a range, we can't tell you.
But when will they know?
And you know, because every year they change, if they don't have money, they'll give you 25%, if they have money, they'll give you 40%.
Yeah, Laura, it could be up, it could be up to 40, but it could be heck, yeah.
20 bucks a minute, right?
I think it's about, not the 22, use 25, I usually use 30%, because if it's 40 and 25, use 30% as an option.
Okay, everybody, if there's nothing else, move your... No, sorry, we can't do that yet, we've got to open up the public comment one more time, we've got to follow the procedures. Although, public comment at 9:59.
I bet it'll be quick.
Yeah, I bet you you're right.